Commissioner McNair, we do have the mics on. We're probably not going to be recording like we normally do, but we can go ahead and proceed.
704 Gardner calling the July 24th meeting and the Gardner Planning Commission to order. All rise and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, start at the right.
Commissioner Collins present.
Commissioner Stolz is here.
Commissioner Juneman present.
Commissioner Ham here.
Commissioner McNair here. We have a, we have a quorum. Next item is consent agenda. All matters within, contained within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by a single motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or the floor.
Recording in progress.
That item may be removed, removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda.
Chairman McNair, I just want to note that Commissioner Mader, while she's not here tonight, in her notes that she provided to me indicated that there needed to be a correction made to the minutes from the last meeting to note that Commissioner McNair actually led the pledge of allegiance. We can make that as a simple typo. I think they still approve this on consent with us being authorized to make that change. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ham, second by Commissioner Juneman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absane? Motion carries five zero. That brings us to our first regular agenda item. Takes us to first agenda item. And that is. Okay. Regular agenda item, Culvers 23-304-007. Re-zoning preliminary development plan and final development plan. Public hearing. Project is located at 188970 Gardner Road.
As noted with this, this does incorporate a public hearing as part of the process, but prior to the public hearing, you'll hear an introductory presentation from the applicant and then also from staff. So at this point, I'll just indicate this site is located to, next to the QuickTrip down in South Gardner Road. You should be familiar with that area. It had been before the planning commission, once before, as a site plan several years ago, with some of the adjustments that have been made in that area and the construction in that area. At this point, the rezoning is really associated with the idea of this being a planned district. So you're looking at a development plan tonight, a preliminary development plan as part of this process. With that, I will turn it back over to the chair and we'll have the applicant presentation.
Do you have a presentation from the applicant?
Hello?
Please state your name and address.
My name is Joey Conady. My home address is 2601 Northwest Vaughn Drive in Blue Springs, Missouri. All right, my name is Joey. I am the president of Mitchell Private Holdings, which is a franchise group that operates 12 Culvers in the Kansas City metro area. Gardner will be our 13th and we are so excited to be here. I want to do a few introductions of people in the group. We've got the designated franchisee Rebecca Quintana and her husband Jose. Our building partner with McCon Building Construction, this is Chris McGuire. And then with Kim Lee Horn, our engineer architect partner, Maria Patac. She just got married. New last name. So I could tell you a lot about what we do in our organization, but first and foremost, we serve amazing food, butterburgers and fresh frozen custard every day, all day long, from 10 to 10. And the Kansas City metro area seems to really love it and we love making it for them. The other thing we do is we provide an amazing place for team members to work. We provide outstanding opportunity for leadership development, something we are very focused on. We hope to, well, we really will hire 85 to 90 team members in the, for this restaurant. Our roster stands pretty much on average about 80 team members per restaurant. So bringing in some new jobs for sure for the area and hopefully a lot of future growth for the people who are in that building. Rebecca has been with Culvers for over 21 years. She started as a teenager, did some training up in Lawrence. And then came on board with the franchise group that operated the Olathe Restaurant for over 20 years. And then went on to open her very first restaurant in Lenexa. She's owned it for four years. So an amazing amount of experience there and enthusiasm for the brand, enthusiasm for team members and enthusiasm for a lot of growth. So super excited. The other, last thing I'll talk about is just our community involvement. You know, I think Culvers has probably, if everybody knows what Culvers is, knows that we're really involved with our community. And we take every opportunity that we can to just sort of embed ourselves and hopefully make it so that the community feels like, oh my gosh, I'm so glad they're here and I hope they never leave. Yeah, school fundraising nights, community fundraising nights, parades, passing out custard at school, you know, ice cream socials, whatever the case may be. In fact, right now we have a Kansas City metro wide fundraiser going on for an organization called K-Canine Companions. We were on the news today, if you didn't see it, and we're hoping to raise about $25,000 in a week for that organization. So we can't wait to bring that all to Gardner as well. So that's all I'll have to say unless there are any questions about our group, the brand itself. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Chris McGuire.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. My name is Chris McGuire with McCon Building Corporation. Address is 1209 Joseph Street, Dodgeville, Wisconsin. And we've had the pleasure of working with the Mitchell Private Holdings team since 2004. This evening, we're going to have Maria do the presentation. She has worked on it with Tyler for the slideshow that we have. We, if, should there be any questions related to architecture, we also have Wendy Martin from Omen Smart and online and available for us. And if there are any questions at all, anything that's kind of out in the left field, that's where I come in and try to help out. Thank you.
Hello, Maria Patac, 8461 Renner Boulevard, Lenexa, Kansas. This first sheet that you'll see, it kind of runs through the existing conditions of the site where we're planning to put the Culvers. It's a pad site with, it's pretty cleared out and ready for a building. This is our proposed site plan. We propose around 62 stalls for this site, complete with a drive-through and employee parking in that southwest corner. This runs through the quick utilities for the site, complete with underground drainage to remove any overground attention. And it will, it drains well. Then lastly, this is our landscape, which is way above and beyond the max, or the minimum required here in Gardner. And it screens all of our utilities well and all of the headlights as well. Then these are the architectural elevations that you'll see. These are a couple more finishing touches that you'll see for the proposed building. And then this is our lighting scheme for the site. If you have any questions.
So what's this photo, site photo metrics?
It's the proposed lighting for the site to show that there will not be any areas that will be darkened and unsafe for pedestrians.
If I recall looking at this, it's just more clarity. This may be a very simple question, so I apologize, but the, with the, with the site foot metrics, you mean, is what I'm referring to? Wherever there is a higher number, it's easy for one to ascertain that that is where it would be brighter compared to where there is a lower number. Is that, am I looking at that accurately?
Yes.
You can do both. You can ask the applicant questions at this point in time. If you want to withhold questions until after the public hearing, you also have the opportunity to discuss those as a commission at that point.
Thank you. Staff?
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good.
Just waiting for my presentation to pop. Oh, there it is. All right.
Thank you.
All right, as mentioned before, this is item one. This is rezoning preliminary development plan and final development plan. Can everybody hear me or do I need to speak up? Okay. The subject site is located again on the west side of Gardner Road, just north of, of the I-35 interchange. Property was planted along with the new QuickTrip lot back in 2020. And more specifically, this is lot two of that, of the QuickTrip store, 294 subdivision. The lot area is approximately 1.5 acres. Site is, as mentioned before by the applicant, currently vacant. Surrounding zoning is currently C3. Basically surrounding it, that green sections, you see the, just the interchange. I think that's actually ag, but we're not going to worry about that right now. The, as part of the site plan, again, the proposal is for a 4,389 square foot fast food restaurant. Access to the site is from a private drive off of Gardner Road. The private drive is shared with QuickTrip store and is located to the, to the north of the site. As part of, as what Dave had mentioned, you know, a site plan was done a couple of years ago, but because of the reorientation and of the building itself, that's why it really caused it to, for us to request that they do a planned development for the site because they were going to need a couple of deviations as part of the new layout. As part of these deviation requests, the first one is to reduce the width of the foundation plantings from eight feet to four feet. And it will, Dave, do you want them to come up and answer these or you want this to be part of the public hearing?
Yeah, just go ahead and give the overview.
Okay, okay. They have provided additional landscape around most of the building, not only the street-facing facade, which the code requires, but also along the north and west building facades. The second deviation request is that no use greater than 20% more than the minimum required parking. The maximum allowed parking based on the square footage gross floor area of the restaurant would allow for 41 spaces. And they're requesting 62. I think the owner kind of addressed that with the addition, the amount of employees that they have. And we'll, we'll let them address why they are requesting this deviation or why we should grant it. Deviation request number three is to request a drive-through facing Gardner Road. Again, as mentioned in the first one, they provided additional landscaping along the frontage to protect the lights from vehicles with, in the drive-through lane. And they've also provided additional landscaping around the perimeter of the, of the building as well. The, the fourth request is for a reduced setback for the signage along Gardner Road. And while they meet the size area requirements, they did not meet the setbacks in order to be granted that additional size. The setback is 10 feet, so they would need to be set back an additional 20 feet to get the square footage that they're requesting right now. And for the fifth deviation request, reduction of the sidewalk in the front of the primary entrance from 10 feet to eight feet. Basically, they want to replace the two feet of concrete with about four feet of plantings. So that's a nice give and take as well. Staff findings that the site is capable of accommodating the building use and other site design elements. The design and arrangement of the building is consistent with good planning and landscape design. The architecture and building design uses quality materials and the style is appropriate for the context. And the plan is in substantial client, compliance with the code. Stack recommends approval of the rezoning from C3 to CP3 and the associated preliminary and final development plans for Culvers with the conditions in the suggested motion.
Did the applicant want to provide any further detail?
Thank you. To address each of those, essentially, we have a site constraints. Site constraints are both in dimension and topography. The issues with the foundation plantings and setbacks associated with the sidewalk run together. The parking, we, we're taking and utilizing the southwest corner of the property as an opportunity to get additional parking. But to explain part of that, when we have a highway store, we need more, more people want to come into the store. More people want to use the facilities, they want to sit down, they want to get out of their vehicles as compared to a store that's in town. So we have found that with Culvers through, through the years, more parking is desirable. Their independence location has recently essentially doubled their parking lot. And we freed up the flow and operations of the store with that. We've added a double drive-through. This store does have a double drive-through as well. So there are guests from in town that if, if they're choosing not to come in and sit down, will be able to get through the facilities quickly and easily. The drive-through face of the road again does come back to a site constraint. We looked at every possible option on this particular site to try to make it work. But we hope that you will like the way that we have ended up with it on-site. And if there are any other things that you have, would like to ask me, I'd gladly answer them.
At this point, I don't have questions, questions. Go ahead.
Good now? Um.
Yeah, we can, we can seek some, if you have specific questions of the applicant, you can do that now too before the public hearing. And you will have that opportunity after the public hearing too. So if the public raises any other issues, we can certainly have that discussion as well.
Go ahead and ask me about the parking. You mentioned that, that was one, one of the questions I had. What's like the typical staffing number that you have during, say, EP, EP, I guess?
16 in this type of operation? Yes.
And Commissioner Juneman, I think also from the standpoint of the applicant, the intent is to have as many of those employees parking in that southwest area. So that, an area that kind of comes out there is where the primary employee parking would be hoped for in this case.
Yeah, and I was, I was looking at the Lenexa location and seeing how much parking spots that location had. Is that building there, is that one about the similar size to what's being going here? Do you guys know if that is the case or not?
Yeah, I would say so.
I don't know if Lenex is an M or an L. I don't know that.
We don't know. We were not the original designers of that building. We purchased that location in March along with the Olathe Culvers and thus giving us the rights to build on this site in Gardner. So there are a lot of things about this site that aren't our typical way of doing things. It's just sort of, we acquired it and we're adjusting. So would I prefer to have 90 parking stalls? Yes, but this will do.
Yeah, no, it seemed like, you know, you have the corner available and it's like, oh, we can just throw a slice of parking back there. You know, I, you know, we have the standards for a reason, you know, to limit the parking. We don't want to create excessive runoff and cause flooding issues potentially. Because, you know, these are only designed for, you know, 25 or 100 year storms, usually not the most extreme of that. So I didn't want it, I didn't want to have too much parking if it's not necessary.
Sure.
But, you know, talking about expanding other, other areas, being close to a highway. And it's consistent with other Culvers locations, I, I think I'm open to allowing that deviation.
Since you did bring up the Lenexa store, I will also indicate because of the proximity to where I live, I've seen the circulation issues and the parking issues that they have. I would say that's a tighter site. This is a relatively small site, but that is a much tighter site. The parking lot is routinely filled and it is my understanding that they have arrangements for some employee parking that occurs on other sites in that area because of those reasons. So here with QuickTrip, QuickTrip was not necessarily designed for shared parking because of all the truck activity in the in and out of the gas. So the ability to have those shared parking arrangements in this kind of situation is very limited.
Right, right.
I just wanted to say I appreciate what the applicant said about including the double drive-through so that the community still has access and doesn't have to wait in a line. Because I want to make sure whatever we're bringing into the community, that we're also making sure that we're not alienating the community when we're bringing in new business. So I appreciate that applicant understanding that a double drive-through will also help include the community in having ease of access.
Thank you.
I have a question, but it, this is more staff compared. But just in general, the deviations that are being asked for, the reasons behind it make, makes sense. That being said, the question is, is there any precedent that we're creating by moving forward with these deviations?
No, I think we're in good shape. Bob might want to expand on that. In particular, if we were concerned about precedent, you know, typically the drive-through window and the access along the major roadway is of concern. But we have had this issue come up with Freddy's and other locations. Again, when we have these tight sites, trying to get the circulation to work, trying to get the traffic patterns and parking area to make sense, it doesn't lend itself to a whole lot of creativity in building positioning and things like that. And this site is pretty constrained in the sense of where it's getting its access from. It's getting it off of a private drive at relatively close proximity to the roadway. So making that circulation work, it's very dependent, I think, on this positioning of the building that you see. So I would say in that particular case, we're not saying a precedent because we do have situations with Freddy's and others where we have allowed this kind of scenario. We do request the enhanced landscaping to block headlights so that the traffic that's moving in an opposing direction to the oncoming traffic is blocked by that landscaping or some type of feature, whether that's a berm or a wall or a combination of factors. So in that particular deviation, that would be the one I'd be most concerned about precedent for. But since we have looked at this before in tight sites, staff's comfortable with that. Bob, do you want to talk to the other deviations at all or about precedents in those?
Sure, Dave. I mean, really, that's what the whole planned development process is about. It allows us and the applicants to work together to come up with a, a better solution. And allows us to take a look at the code and again, get additional, you know, like landscaping or some other aspect, changes on the lot that may not normally fit the strict guidelines of the code. It allows us to work with, with those applicants to, like the foundation plantings. They've got foundation plantings around three sides of the, of the building. And they negotiate with us on the design of the sidewalks and maybe some of the parking. We have additional landscaping out off of Gardner Road, some additional landscaping around some of their signage. So it allows us to tweak the sites for that specific site. It allows us to work with the applicant to get, to get that done.
And, and I think where you see that most prevalent in this particular case was the trade-off that we considered with the sidewalk, which would be at the main entry of the building. Typically, that side of the building, we would not require much foundation planning, if any, at all. In this case, the trade-off of 10 feet of concrete that's going up against that foundation to get some landscaping in that front main area and still meet all the ADA access requirements and things like that. To us, that's a, a better trade-off than concrete meeting the wall of the building in those locations. So those are the kind of factors that staff's looking at during this process.
That was going to be my next question was the ADA compliance with the deviation. So thank you. That, that was going to be my next question.
Yeah, got some more questions. Northeast corner. I saw some conflicting things on the plans, like where it's shown here, the exit is exit only, it's a right turn. But then there was another set of plans where it was shown as straight and right. So I just wanted clarification on what the, what the intention for that is. And if it's only a right turn, should we be adding some more curb jutting out on the side to indicate that it's a turn only? And then also, should we narrow it? Because it's a little wide and some people might want to turn in that location.
I'll go ahead and jump in. Chris, come on up. It's, it's one of those things that I think will be between the, this access point's been a discussion with staff and.
Yeah, because I was thinking about Freddy's and how that, how that.
Yeah, I think we have, we have two things going on here that, what staff's concerned about. And it's been addressed fairly effectively. This will be an egress only, so it'll be marked. I do believe there's an informational signage that is also part of the sign package that'll label it as an exit only. So from that perspective, we noticed that there's differences in the plan sheet. I think the intent here is the biggest movement we're most concerned about is somebody who tries to make a left coming out of this. The straight across movement with the drive into QuickTrip, people are going to do that, no matter what. And even if we do curve that a little bit, there will still be people that are going to try to make that straight across because they're going to make both stops there, right? They're going to get their gas, they may decide to come here or vice versa. So one of the things there is, is when we first started talking about this, this was a wider drive that had almost what I call full in and out ingress and egress. We arrived at this point with a narrower throat. It is a little bit larger than your typical. I think part of that has to do with not just the car traffic, but with their delivery trucks and things like that as they try to ingress and egress. The drive's got to be wide enough to accommodate that. And also, I know our emergency services vehicles have indicated that they wanted that two access points with the ability to maneuver adequately through that. So I would tell you that it's going to likely have that arrow that shows straight through as well as right turn. We'd like to encourage people to only make the right turn egress. But I think you're going to see a straight across movement and still think there'll be people who'll still try to make a left there, which could be a little bit difficult depending on how the traffic is working in that area. So at this point, I'm, I'll let you go ahead and respond. But the general thinking is we're likely to see that straight across movement and the right movement. And that would be the maximum we'd like to see in there.
You addressed the highlights. So what I wanted to do, I was, the semis and the emergency vehicles are the biggest things to drive that.
Okay. Yeah, that, one of the civil plans showed, like the auto turn-in showed, going in the northwest. Yeah, that, one of the civil plans showed, like the auto turn-in showed, going in the northwest entrance. And so that's why I'm sure if it was not intended for trucks, you answered my questions, thank you. Another question I had was the parking islands. Looks like they're, they're hatched in that, like just painted lines, they're not actual concrete curbs to kind of demarcade, get, demarcade and keep people from just driving on through it. Why was that choice made? I don't think it looks as nice as having a nice island there. Is there a reason you can get for that?
It's the semi-turning, the deliveries specifically and the emergency vehicles. So in order to make the, Culvers requires us to have what is referred to as a WB sixty-seven turning movement down here. So it's a wheelbase of sixty-seven, the over-the-road semi. So in order to get that on and off the property, it is night drop, but with a night drop condition, meaning that they're, they have a keyed access and they'll deliver it off hours, so when the customers are not there. But they'll need all of that space to turn around and get through the site.
Also.
Also, Austin, we were informed by Johnson County Fire District One that they did not want those islands.
Oh, really?
Specifically for their turning rate uses.
The patio on the north side, is there going to be outdoor seating for this?
Yes, sir.
There will be, okay, I didn't see any renderings or anything for that, so I was just curious about that. And then the, the signs, the monument signs, so now there was a deviation for the height of those. It seemed like a lot of the height is just kind of a rock decorative base on that. I know the staff report mentioned consistency with the QuickTrip signs, but QuickTrip signs next to it are much shorter, it seemed like, the digital ones. I know there's obviously a tall one in the back for the trucks, but, you know, just being off Gardner Road, I thought this would be a good opportunity to maybe get those. It didn't seem like they needed to be as tall, I guess.
Challenges with the, as a guest were to come in off of the highway. The visibility is a bit of a challenge. Culvers has flavor of the day, they try to communicate that to the general public. So the electronic message center is desirable for that. The other piece that comes into play is the, to address part of the concern in terms of appearance is to more heavily landscape the base of the sign. So it addresses the, the element of elevation, if you will, and so the overall height by shortening with some landscaping or softening it.
And I understand you guys want the greatest visibility that you can have. I don't want Gardner Road to turn into just a bunch of business signs and stuff.
Commissioner Juniman, I'm going to have the staff here change over to the presentation slides from the applicant and get to the landscape plan. I also know that with those signs, there is a significant amount of landscaping that's being proposed around the bases and things like that to help soften those, in those cases. And I think you're specifically talking about the height of the monument sign in that northeast corner is a little bit, it's a little bit larger or a little bit taller than
Yes.
we typically see for around monument sign, a freestanding monument sign. I don't know if this pulls it in very well, but there is landscaping that is, that is going to be in and around where that sign is. You can kind of see it in there. That'll help soften that. We'll get to those kinds of specifics, obviously, when we get more into the site construction plans and things like that. We've talked about that also at the base of the pole sign on the southeast corner, which is within the guidance as far as height there. I just want to note on, on our regulations, and Bob can correct me when I state this, if I state it wrong. Our regulations, because they're within a thousand feet of the interstate, they would be allowed to have a sign up to seventy-five feet high as a pole-mounted sign. Now, what happens with that pole-mounted sign is they're giving up one of their monument signs. They would be entitled to two monument signs on this site. Typically, with this pole sign, they are, you know, basically foregoing one of the monument signs. And this one is only proposed to be forty-four feet, so staff's very comfortable with that as far as visibility. I think they took a look at what's really the sightline from the interstate and what can be seen. And then I would say with the project, the KDOT project and some of the road changes and things that could happen there. I think the monument sign in northeast corner combined with the landscaping can work. But I would say we, we have kind of a similar concern about that size because that is a little bit taller than we're normally used to. But at least most of it's in that decorative rock kind of approach, which will correspond with the rock on the store, I believe, Bob. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's just, I, I would have liked to seen that monument sign in the northeast corner match the height of that QuickTrip sign across the entrance from, I guess. I don't know what my other, other commissioners do about that, I guess. And then, last question here, sorry. The six parallel spots along the east and northeast corners. So my, I guess my assumption is those are for people who go for the drive-through, their food isn't quite ready yet and they pull over. And then that's where they kind of wait for someone to bring out their order, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is that typically need, is six of those, or is that needed or?
There's a heavier movement towards online ordering now. And this fall, we should see the app come out rather than just a straight conditional online ordering. So we are preparing for, as an example, where when I'm at my office, if our office wants to order, one person will go, but it'll be six or ten orders will go with that. They'll pull up, food will be brought out to them so that it's a more efficient process.
Yeah, I didn't know if that's like, usually that would be on like the, the main entrance side, but I didn't know if that's intended to be on, on that side for, to convert moment pickups or something like that.
The main entrance side is when you're converting an existing store, trying to find a way to make it work. There are different options. You certainly can do main entrance side and owners will designate what they feel is the best operations. This happens to work well for the, with the double drive-through, having additional parking. If some, if, if I'm ordering something simple and somebody else ordered a fish dinner, a fish dinner's going to take an extra two minutes. So we want to make sure that we, we're not slowing down the production of the, or the movement of the line as people are waiting.
All right, thank you, that's, I think that's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Ham?
I have no further questions.
Okay, we've got a public hearing on this. And at this time, we're going to open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allowed three minutes. Individuals representing a group is allowed seven minutes. Does anybody who wants to come forward?
I figured I'd just jump up here since I'm like, I think, the only person in the public. But Todd Allen Brand, Paine and Brockway, four twenty-six South Kansas Avenue, representing Olathe Health KU system. They own the property to the east, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. I think this is going to be a great addition to Gardner. And I'm sure that their employees and, and clients or patients will be happy to know there's another opportunity on the south side of town to get something to eat and, or relax. But I did have one question, and I don't know, you know, how this needs to be addressed, but I was also curious about the parking in the northeast corner. And specifically the function of the drive in the middle, and I mean, take it with a grain of salt, I wasn't involved in the project. I just don't understand how that center lane is going to work if the drive-through is completely full. How are you going to, how are people going to migrate through that center lane and get pickup, do pickup orders? I mean, the center lane seems, you know, it's probably there for fire code, for emergency stuff, but I don't know if, you know, if it's stacked up and people are waiting to order at the boards. I don't even know how that center lane's going to function very well. And then just other comment, that very south stall on that east side, I don't understand how a car's going to be able to get out of it, order at the window and pull into that stall. That's pretty tight maneuver. But that's just my two cents, but again, I think it's a, a great location and it'll be great for Gardner. Thank you.
Anyone else? It was, no others wanting to offer opinions or concerns. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Commissioner Juniman, motion, and Commissioner Ham, second. All favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Three to five zero. Does anybody have any comment, any more comments or questions?
Could we have the applicant address the concerns about, Mr. Allen Brand's concerns about the center lane?
Yes.
Thank you. An example of where the center lane is beneficial is that if I were to go through and order a custard treat and did not choose to get anything else on the menu, then I could, they may serve that at the window and I can pull forward and, and forego waiting in line to exit the parking lot. And the other item that was addressed in terms of the extreme solidly stall on the east side, again, would go back to the application of the online app. The, whether the online ordering or the app, if I'm able to get into that queue, I can maybe able to pick up that space. And then it allows me to, when that order is delivered, I can again, get out through the center lane.
So you would still wait in the drive-through line, you just pass through basically if you were to pick up?
It, it depends on what that line looks like. I, I can assure you that where, when I'm at, at home, I'll look at all of those things. Everybody's conscious of their time. So if there's, sometimes I'll walk into a store if, if something is too long.
I know for, for, for me, I think it's having the width to have a double ordering line versus having a dedicated loop around the building. I think that's a trade-off that I would, that I would take to have the double ordering line. It doesn't look like there's enough room to extend and add another lane around. So I don't, I mean, yeah, if you're doing an online order, you had to wait in the line to get to the spot to pick it up, it's going to be frustrating. I, I think most people would agree, but, you know.
And I'm going to suggest, just because of discussions that we've had with the applicant on, on these kinds of elements, the nature of how people are picking up, and I'll call it fast food, but as they're going through this process, and when you're blending the types of products that you have in this particular case, where some things are very quick orders, you know, a shake or something like that, versus the ability to get a meal. If you're ordering on the apps now, I have witnessed in other places and been part of where you tell people at the order board, hey, I've got an order in. They can direct you right there and potentially use those, you know, last three spots. You don't even go to the drive-through window, they just assign you and say, we'll bring it out to you, go to spot number four, number five, or whatever it is there. And they get out of the queue immediately instead of sitting in the queue waiting for that pickup window to get there. So there's things that the different restaurants are trying now and trying to do with the drive-through because it has become a very convenient option, both with the online ordering as well as the typical drive-through kinds of activities. I would have more concerns with the AI boards and what I've witnessed there, but that's a whole nother issue with other franchises. So I think there's an element of this that's, that's trying to figure out how to adapt to some of those things. The, the other item I'm going to bring up, Commissioner Mater had made comments prior to the meeting. Because she's not able to attend tonight, not feeling well, one had to do with the plantings along Gardner Road to mitigate the lights shining. And she does have a concern about the size of those plantings and making sure that they're effective from the time they're planted. Moving forward, we'll work with the applicant on those kinds of things and those details. It may mean that we're looking at a little less plantings to get a little bit larger planting in place because you don't want to pack them in too tight at certain sizes. But we'll work with the applicant on that element of it. The intent, though, is to have that landscape buffer established as quickly as possible. And that way, we're effectively blocking any headlight conflict at that point. So I just wanted to bring that one up for you.
I appreciate that Commissioner Mater catches things like that and not thinking about like in the winter when foliage is less. So I, I appreciate her catching that.
Anyone else?
I'll make that motion. Are we, I'm sorry, that's it, we ended the public hearing, we're making the motion to.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, so move to, or motion to end the public hearing.
We already had that.
Did we?
Yes, we did.
We, we did have a motion already to do that.
This distance thing.
We're glad you're here, but. So I think the suggested motion is up on the screen, can you see it, Commissioner Ham?
Yes, hold on, ah, recommended motion, yes, I will make the recommended motion. After review of application two-three dash three zero four dash zero seven, rezoning and associated preliminary development plan and final development plan for Culvers and staff report date July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The planning commission recommends approval of the applications as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. One, the monument sign shall meet the standards of one seven point one zero point zero six zero C for electronic message signs. Two, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, stormwater, or other public facility shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit. And three, approval of the deviations as presented in the staff report.
There's also a condition four on your screen, if you can see that.
I do not have that, I cannot see the conditions on the screen and I'm going off of the packet that I was sent, digital.
Can I amend her motion with?
You want to move to amend it?
Okay, move to add item number four, provide documentation that Culvers has the right of access to the western entrance from QuickTrip.
Do we have a second for the motion amendment? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Ham, did you hear the instruction that, that the city attorney was giving?
I'm sorry, no, I did not hear that.
That's my bad because I was reclining too much. So we're, we just made a motion to add one condition onto your motion. So we're going to vote on that motion to add the fourth condition. And after that, we're going to vote on the overall motion to approve with all four commissioners.
So we're going to vote on the amendment proposed by Commissioner Juniman and seconded by Commissioner Sosa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Amendment passes, five zero. And now we'll vote on the total move, motion stated with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Three to five zero. That leave the original motion. In the second edit. We good?
Good, yeah, thanks.
It's okay.
I was trying to still be as active as if I was sitting there in person.
Yeah, we just wanted to verify, so Commissioner Sosa.
I second.
Seconded the motion.
So just for clarity, the motion was by Commissioner Ham on the overall motion and then seconded by Commissioner Sosa.
We're good.
Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner.
We're good.
We're good?
Move forward.
Commissioner Juniman, seconded by Commissioner Combs. All favor?
Aye.
Closed. Three to five zero for adjourn.
Commissioner Ham, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, all right, thank you, all right, I'll see you guys next month.